Very briefly oriented us, the drawing that you see before you has Stratford Avenue, diagonally here, Hamilton Avenue coming in from Stratford Avenue, and then Johnson Court. The subject properties we're talking about are 40 Johnson Court, where there's a current house and a couple sheds and a garage that are located, that all will be razed, and there is 1307 Stratford Avenue, which is a strip center, which will be razed for parking for the new community center facility. Church is on the corner of Hamilton and Stratford Avenue. The proposed site plan takes down 40 Johnson Court. Many of the facilities that are within 40 Johnson Court will be relocated into that new building, including administrative offices, the credit union, and pastor's office. So, a lot of those things are going back into that building, so it's a replacement, especially on the second floor, mainly it's replacement of existing facilities. What we have is the driveway coming off of Johnson Court to the back, where we have 11 parking spaces, one handicap space, and then we've relocated our storage, which were in those garage and the storage building, onto the adjacent 59 Johnson Court, where we're going to be putting two new garages and a shed, and our dumpster also, also owned by the church, we're borrowing some of our property. What we have on 1307 Stratford Avenue is the location for our parking lot, main, majority of our parking, there's 30 parking spaces there. One of the challenges of this site is the fact that 1307 Stratford Avenue is about 45 feet higher than 40 Johnson Court. And, that's one constraint. Another constraint is the fact that, in order for us to gain sanitary sewer, we can only go down so far, so we can get out of the lower level of the building. So, it sets our lowest level of the building, about four feet below the rear grade. So, what we're doing is we're using a bridge, which will be a ramp, from 1307 Stratford Avenue, to get us onto the second floor of this building. Then, when you get in there, there's an elevator, there's stairs to communicate between two levels. Then, in the rear, we have stairs in these two locations, plus a stair here, which are exits from that lower level up to grade. So, here, here, and there's an interior stair here, which comes out at a mid-level. What happens is Johnson Court is actually at a mid-level, between 1307 and the lower level of this building, it's at a mid station. So, it gets a little complicated because of the grades of the property. Some of those are reflected on SP2, you can see that, where our finished floor, the upper level is 25, the parking area will be at 22 and a half, so we'll be going up about two and a half feet on a ramp, ADA accessible, to that second floor. The lower level will be at 13, and our sewer connection is at 11.89, so we can just get out at that elevation of 13. And, the rear parking lot is at 17. So, it's, the lower level is four feet down from that rear parking lot. What we've done for drainage, this is a low pocket that exists now. They've had issues in the church with water over time. We know that we're going to be subject to water here, we've done some test pourings, where we've seen water that's about eight, nine feet down. What we're going to be doing is putting an underdrain system underneath this floor, it's going to be flowing to our lift station. Our drainage for this small amount of pavement is going to be going into infiltrators, any water that gets beyond that will go to that lift station also, it'll be pumped up to this catch basin over on Stratford Avenue, on 1307 Stratford Avenue. This whole parking lot here, though, has its own separate drainage system, so it's not part of that lower, lower area. And then, that will connect across Stratford Avenue into the catch basin that's out on Hamilton, out the corner of Hamilton to Stratford. So, everything with gravity from here out, the only thing we're pumping is the lower level drainage system, and this small drainage system for the small amount of parking. That will go to this lift station. Just want everybody to understand how this is, it's, we're dealing with a problem that we know does exist.
Can I, I'm taking a little liberties, I got most of it?
Okay, got a question, ask me, please.
The pump station, the pump.
Yep.
That, yeah. That's a pump that can be managed by the church?
Right. It's a groundwater pump outside the building.
Outside the building. And, if that pump should fail, what happens?
Well, it would be two pumps, number one, it'll be a duplex pumps system, so it should not fail unless we lose, unless we lose power for an extended period of time.
This is Stratford.
If the possibility exists, that does happen, and then we could put a generator associated with it. It seems a little overdone, but it's possible, to put a generator.
So, you have two pump stations?
You have two pumps in that pump station.
Two pumps in that tunnel.
So, if one fails, you still have another pump, you can change the other pump back out.
And if there's a power failure?
The pump station will not work, but you are still draining into this infiltration system.
Okay.
There's storage within that infiltration system. It has to fill up over top, go into a control structure before it goes into that pump station. So, you have time to regain your power.
Okay, I'll hold questions.
Okay.
Till later.
To, to go through, just to see, so you can understand how the building relates to the site. This is Johnson Court out here, the lower end of the page, you have the main entrance, which is into a lobby, which is at a mid-level, goes into an elevator, and you can go down half a level to the lower level, up half a level to the second floor. You also have a stair here, which you can exit or enter at a mid-level, goes down to that first floor, or up to the second floor. So, that's entrance from Johnson Court. From the back, where the park, small parking lot is, you have stairs leading to this corridor on the lower level, and a separate stair leading out of this multi-function room, out to the back. On this lower level are classrooms, a multipurpose room, a thrift bookstore, and kitchen that services this multipurpose room. Multipurpose room has holding petitions, so it could be either 50, 50 people on tables and chairs, or open it all up, it could be 95 people, tables and chairs. What we foresee is that we're, you know, this multipurpose room gets done at different times, which are not at the same time as we're having church. They control all that, so that we can deal with our parking issues. They're not going to be having the big function here while church services are going on, they're at different times. The classrooms are all associated with the church, when there being Sunday School, the other programs that they have, associated with the church. To go upstairs, on the next floor, where you have entered, gone into your elevator, you come up to the upper lobby, you come in, and then you can either go through the credit union, which is in this location, you can go into here, which is the administrative offices of the church, or you can come through here, into the pastor's suite in the back. What has been added to this, from what was at 40 Johnson Court, is a leasable area on this area, which is accessible directly from that parking lot, which they foresee leasing to not-for-profits that would service the church and the neighborhood. So, it's a small leasable area in this location. From the back, from the back you have a stair, which also gets you to grade from that emergency exit out the back. Exterior of the building, we're using stone on the lower portions, a stone, you see windows actually to that lower portion, so you can see how it's buried into the grade, and then above we'll have precast bands, and then brick on the upper portions of the building. Where the main entrance, that elevator is, that'll be all stone, all the way up to the roof, and then the same around all four sides. We'll have a manser-type roof with fiberglass asphalt shingles, which will help hide any HVAC equipment that will be on that roof. Very attractive building, I believe, that we'll be providing.
This time, I'd like to discuss the administrative comments received by Jay. The police department, the fire department, the building department, the engineering department, the health department, and the public works department, all had no comment on this proposal. Tina Beato, the conservation administrator, said that, quote, "The commission should consult with engineering to determine whether stormwater management is adequate." You have just heard from Pat Rose, that he has received the town engineer's comments and has addressed them adequately. Jay had numerous comments within his planning staff review, which I want to take the answer one at a time. Additionally, Pastor Sutton, as I indicated, is here with me to expand on any answer which I may give you, which leaves you confused, and that's certainly possible. Jay's first question is, "What is the anticipated function of the classrooms? When will they be used?" My response is, "The classrooms will function as community meeting space for such organizations as Alcoholics Anonymous, information sessions for first-time homebuyers or mortgage applicants, single-parent outreach sessions. These types of use will typically take place Monday through Friday, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m." Additionally, on Fridays and Saturdays, this space will be used for the young adult retreats and evangelism meetings. Sunday school will take place in this area as well on Sundays, while the adults are attending church services in the main church. Finally, for two weeks during July of each year, on Monday through Friday, the space will be used for a vacation Bible school. Number two, "How will the classrooms remain secure for the general public? Are there safety requirements that need to be followed?" Response to that is that new safety protocols have been instituted at the church due to a recent theft, robbery actually, armed robbery actually, at the credit union. These protocols include the installation of a video monitoring system, staffing of the facility by the security ministry at the church, who are persons on a voluntary basis who supervise the conduct of occupants during operational hours. The security ministry personnel will notify either the pastor or police of improper conduct, depending upon the severity of same, and the issue of security is an ongoing discussion within the building committee, which is responsible for this construction project. So, they're continuously talking about whether other security protocols would be worthwhile. Third question, "What is the anticipated function of the multipurpose room?" Response to that is, "The multipurpose room will be used for such things as wedding receptions, retirement parties, birthday parties, baby or bridal showers, Sunday morning youth church. It'll also be available on an as-requested basis for neighborhood meetings and other community events." Number four, "How will the kitchen be used?" The kitchen will be used in conjunction with the multipurpose room for use with respect to the above-mentioned occasions, parties, showers, et cetera. What is the purpose of the leasable area shown on the second floor? This leasable area would only be leased out to community-based nonprofit entities, such as the Council of Churches, a teenage adolescent pregnancy prevention program, or similar such community-based nonprofit entities, and it would be used for office use only. So, it's going to be leased, if at all, to a nonprofit, a community-based nonprofit, for office use only. What security measures are in place for the credit union? The credit union will only be open Thursdays from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., and on Saturday morning from 9:00 a.m. to 10:15. So, oh, Sunday, I'm sorry, Sunday, Sunday, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:15. Surveillance cameras will be used, and there will be an armed security guard on premises at all times that the credit union is open. Additionally, I want to say this publicly, there's no cash involved in this credit union. For the most part, everything is done by check. People bring in checks, they deposit it, and it's not a cash op, it's not even a safe there. So, this robbery that took place, apparently the criminals were under the impression that there was cash in the credit union, and there isn't. So, I'd like the public to know that. No cash. Jay also mentions neighborhood concerns that were articulated at that zoning commission meeting, having to do with that condo project down the other end of the street that I was involved in, because of flooding in the area and parking of cars along Hamilton Avenue. That flooding issue is an issue that affects Hamilton Avenue at the South Avenue end of Hamilton Avenue. If you drive across Hamilton Avenue from Stratford Avenue to South Avenue, Hamilton Avenue dips significantly approximately halfway down the street as it approaches South Avenue, where flooding becomes an issue. But, this is not an issue in the vicinity of the church. Now, Pat Rose indicated that there was a lower area in the backyard where this proposed building is going to be located, where those pumps are going to be installed. He also indicated that there was a flooding problem in the church. Years ago, when an addition to the church was constructed, where the elevator is now located, in the pit of the elevator, which is located below ground, water had, some water had accumulated in the pit of the elevator, because the elevator pit breached the water table. That was a problem that the church had with the building contractor that constructed that addition. At the time, there was litigation involved, and that problem has never been adequately resolved. So, there is a minor water problem in the pit of the elevator, but there is not a flooding problem on Hamilton Avenue in the vicinity of this church. The flooding problem on Hamilton Avenue is at the other end of Hamilton Avenue. Additionally, as you've already seen from the site plans and submitted exhibits, there's plenty of parking on the proposed site, 41 spaces to be exact, and decided the existing church to accommodate all anticipated activity. That large parking lot that is shown in the photos, up those few steps from the back of the church, is where people park on Sundays when they attend church. In addition to the spaces that are located in that parking lot, which are not anticipated to be used for this proposal, we've got our, we've got our own 41 parking spaces for this proposal. So, parking is not going to be an issue. Finally, Jay correctly pointed out that there were three handicap parking spaces we had shown in front of the building, which encroached into the public right away. The revised site plan, Exhibit 11, has removed those spaces, reducing the total number of spaces to 41. Jay suggested in his administrative comments that the reduction of these three spaces might render the site non-conforming with respect to parking. That is not true. I've analyzed it, and I've gone over it with Jay. Exhibit 12 is a recapitulation by Pat Rose of the gross area of the first and second floor, along with the parking requirements for each floor. As you can see from this exhibit, 22.29 spaces are needed for the first floor, and 17.35 spaces are needed for the second floor, for a total required parking of 39.64 spaces, say 40 spaces are required. We have 41 spaces, therefore, we are in compliance with the parking regulations with this revised site plan. Now, when we were calculating the parking, the second floor is all office, so we use the regulation that applies to offices, one space for 250 square feet. The first floor is a combination of the community room, the kitchen, and the other ancillary space. So, for that regulation, we went to Section 12.5.5, which is the regulation that deals with churches, and that calls out one space for 200 square feet. So, we use the one space for 200 square feet for the first floor, and one space for 250 square feet for the second floor, which is correct. Now, finally, the special case approval criteria is as follows. The proposed use shall be in conformance to all requirements of the district in which it is located. Churches are permitted uses in an RM1 zone and a CA zone, we comply. Two, the location size and intensity of such use shall be compatible and harmonious in relation to the size of the property and existing neighborhood development. This is going to be an extremely attractive building in addition to the neighborhood, we've got adequate parking, all the drainage issues are covered, and we comply with that regulation, in conformance with the town plan of development. Once again, the town plan of development allows church use in these zones subject to special case approval. Traffic is not going to be an issue, the people that are going to use this building are going to use it at a different time than church services are taking place. There might be some Sunday School going on in this building while the adults are in church, but there isn't going to be any significant use of this building while everybody's attending Sunday services, which take place two times Sunday morning. So, the amount of traffic that's going to be generated from this new facility is going to be no more than the amount of traffic that is generated by the church services on Sunday morning, because it's the same people using both buildings. Missive noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration, obviously no problem. Not adversely affect tax valuation of neighboring properties, this is going to add to the tax value of neighboring properties. One, we're getting rid of that atrocious building on Stratford Avenue that's been vacant for decades, and two, we're putting up this multimillion-dollar facility, which is beautiful, in the neighborhood, and will not create any police or fire hazards. You saw from the lack of comment from the police and fire department, that there are no anticipated police and fire hazards here. Now, at this time, I would like to ask all those people who are here in favor of this application, to please stand and be identified. And I did a count earlier, and I believe it's 58 people, not counting me.
I trust your math.
Mr. Knott, I think that everyone here, Pastor Sutton, should get extra credit.
Especially after having to sit through those other presentations. That completes my presentation, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Knott.
Well, thank everybody for their patience and indulgence. At this point, I'd like to open it up to questions to the commissioners. Mr. Fuller?
No questions, I think this is a very good application, I think it fits special case, because I think it's going to enhance property values in the area, too. Usually, when you have good community organizations, whether it's faith-based or not, it has a positive impact on the community. So, I just want to applaud it, they did their homework, they put a lot of work and effort into this.
Thank you very much. Mr. Giuliani?
Attorney, that's a great-looking building for the area, it's going to look great, and church is going to be great for it, but I do have just like two small questions for the gentleman over there, in my silly little mind, I just hope I heard Attorney Knott say that the elevator system will be straightened out with the water being underneath it?
I don't think I said that, what I said was...
What did you say?
What I said was that the problem has existed for a couple of decades.
So, doing all it is...
Has going to have no effect on that.
But, the, huh?
Different building.
Different building?
Different buildings. Yeah, there's a little water at the, at the base of the elevator in the church, but it's not, we can, there's nothing we can do about it, it's not going away, and it's not a problem.
Right.
And that has nothing to do with this problem.
And there's no generator here, in case the power goes, for the other two pump systems? Okay. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
I think it's a great addition to the neighborhood. I do have two concerns, there are two questions. One is, you said you'd be using the multipurpose room for functions, weddings, birthday parties, is that going to be rented out to other people outside the church?
Pastor Sutton?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Pastor, my name is Dr. William B. Sutton III, I'm the pastor of the First Baptist Church of Stratford. Yes, it would be used for other persons in the community. The emphasis of the structure is for us to extend ministry into the community, and so, yes, we would be doing that.
Okay, and then, so then my second question, would there be alcohol allowed on the premises?
No, no.
It would be an alcohol-free?
Alcohol-free, no.
Because I know...
That would be inconsistent with our faith.
Okay, because some churches do allow it, so, some do, some don't, so...
Not with our church, our church would not...
If it was safe game, you'd have a problem.
Alrighty then.
Tell us how you really feel.
We get to stand up at our presentations.
Those are my only questions, good luck to you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Forrester?
Yes, please. There was discussion regarding landscaping, there were comments made to that, and I may have missed when you addressed them. The front landscaping area doesn't meet 1212, too, will that be addressed in the final plan?
That, that will be addressed in the final plans. What won't be addressed in the final plans is the landscaping, and the reason why you didn't hear me address it is because I really didn't want to talk about it.
Okay, well, I'm going to make you talk about it.
That's a good catch, though. Jay mentioned in his comments that there should be some buffer plantings along this property line. We really don't have, we really, and he's right, there should be, but we really don't have the ability to do that, because this is going to be our driveway. As it turns out, we own this property, so we're not going to be adversely impacting on our neighbor, because we are our neighbor.
Right. That's, that's really the only other, you know, that was the only question I had. I've got to say that I've been involved in zoning for several years, and rarely do I find a plan that is as beneficial to the neighborhood, and is well-done, and addressed all of the difficulties regarding the plot plan of the property. So, I commend the architects for their, for their work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I concur with all of the other comments, it is an excellent plan, and I'm very proud of it, and I know a lot of work went into it, you can definitely see that. I do have a few questions, and one concern. I'm going to follow up on Mr. Forrester's thought about landscaping and shrubbery. If that property, I know you own the property next to it, I know you've explained that right now you're using it as a driveway, but if that property was ever sold, we would not have allowed for the benefit of additional landscaping and beautifying that area. Could you look at something of how you could improve the kind of landscaping for that area?
Well, first of all, the church is buying neighboring properties...
I know they are, yeah.
Not selling them.
Nevertheless, we're looking to see if we can beautify it.
Could that ever occur? We could certainly put the buffer plantings on the lot next door.
Okay.
Thereby accomplishing the same effect.
That would be a good, a good move.
But, they're not going to sell this property.
I don't think so, but nevertheless, we are looking to try to beautify the area as much as possible. We talked about the credit union, and there's no cash, as most credit unions are, but one of the popular things to do, and I would even encourage, is an ATM, one of the areas that we have a need for in this part of town, that does encourage more cash. I don't know if that's something you've thought about, and how would you include that is, or would you include that in your thinking?
They have no plans of doing an ATM now or in the future.
Okay.
To be honest with you, there are enough ATMs around town that people can use. I don't think that the church needs to attract that kind of temptation to its own location.
And that, that's fine, it is the church's prerogative, obviously, it is just one of the things that I've now noticed, and most credit unions are adding ATMs because it's efficient, and I wanted to know if the church had thought about it.
There's no plan to do so now.
I think the next question was my concern. I am concerned about the flooding area, we are seeing a more occurrence, whether it's climate change, or however way you want to describe it, we have a high water table in that area. We have a high water table in that area. We've already... I've already sent a letter to the engineering department asking them to prioritize looking at addressing the collection of water. Lot of it is from rain, not so much from flooding, but from high storm events, where they come down quickly, it fills up, and then it takes a few hours for it to dissipate. We also experience enough power outages in this area that it is not something that can be easily ignored. What I want to do is avoid adding more water from the use of the building, because you're going to have more impervious surfaces, to the water table. Would you consider putting in a generator to ensure that we don't add any more water in the event of a high storm water event?
Well, to be honest with you, the answer is yes, we would, because we can get a small power generator for less than $1,000. So, that's not a problem. But I think that doesn't solve your problem, because having a generator there is going to get the water pumped out into the street quicker than if it sits in the galleys that are located on-site. So, having the pumps work is going to get water into the street where the... And to be honest with you, Stephanie, there is no flooding in the street adjacent to this church. But the generators will get the water into the street quicker than if they sit in the galleys while the electricity is out.
Well, if I... Then I misunderstood what Mr. Ross Rose had described. I thought that, once the galleys were filled, then the water would pump over...
That's right.
And then it would go across the street into another galley.
Slightly different. The galleries fill up, then they overtop the control structure, go into the pump chamber, get pumped up to a catch basin at the end of the gallery system. They're not... They would not go into the other gallery system. They would go to the catch basin that would be released directly to the street.
So, the catch basin has a limited amount of reservoir, and then it would go into the street?
Right. It's forced made here into this catch basin, which is our outlet for this drainage system. But they both come together and then go into this catch basin that's in the street, which connects out of Stratford Avenue.
But the pumps would only kick in if the galleys filled up?
No, this pump is going to kick in, and any groundwater goes directly into that pump. The groundwater that's under the building, that is the underdrain system that will go into this, that will continually feed that directly. We're not going to put that water back into the ground, because it would just be circulating water around, which would make sense. Surely, this is purely for the impervious surface in collection of this rear parking lot. The groundwater system that controls the underneath portion and the elevator pit will go into this pump chamber directly and then be pumped out to this catch basin.
So, the purpose of the... I'm sorry to be slow on this, but so the purpose of the galleys is what? If it's continually...
It's for the pavement.
It's for the pavement.
Right. And as per DEP requirements, that it's an open bottom gallery that allows it to leach back into the grade. That's what they want us to do, the way we're not continually treating water.
Okay. To answer your question, the flooding is further down the street. I understand that. But what I'm looking at is the volume of watering that travels because of the incline to that area. It's not that there's flooding on that property. It actually travels.
The water from this area is never going to get down to the other end of Hamilton Avenue, because as you drive from Stratford Avenue to south on Hamilton, you go up a rise where that big parking lot is on the right, and just as you go past the White House at the end of that part, it dips down. So, the water is not downhill from the church to South Avenue. It's uphill, then it goes downhill. So, that end of the street's not going to get any of this water.
Okay. Those are really all of my thoughts. I do think it's a good plan. Mr. Giuliano?
Yeah, can I just make one more comment for that generator idea? Being that it's a church, okay? And let's say we have another Sandy, and I lose my power. At least, if they had a generator, they'd be able to take in their congregation and me to get over there for the Sunday night. Okay? So, I mean, I can't tell you what to do. I can just look at safety issues, and regardless of the great engineer over there, I can't foresee why you wouldn't put a generator in. We have no idea... I'm sorry, Mrs. Sutton. We have no idea what's going to happen with this rainfall that's coming. Even though we're in a drought, we don't know. I'm just saying, looking ahead, and plus the safety, and at least we have a place to go.
I will tell you this. It's a compliment to Mr. Rose and the design that we're spending this much time over $1,000 pump for a generator. So, in the scheme of things, let's take it not out of context.
I have no problem with a standby generator. If that's what you want, that's not a problem.
We could.
Yeah.
At this point, I'm going to entertain, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Good evening, Commission. My name is Dr. Frederick Streets. I live at 602 Nichols Avenue in Stratford. I came to Connecticut 45 years ago, and that's when I started to learn about the history and the ministry of this church, which is a phenomenal institution in our midst. And since the arrival of its current pastor, the church continues to grow significantly, as you all are aware. I've been involved in two major church significant... Significant church development, building projects, and like all of you, I want to commend the church for its thoroughness and its architects and engineers who will make this project the success that I know that it will be. You've already indicated that the value of the project for this community and for our town of Stratford, I would just like to point out that, as they continue to be an effective institution in this town, that this church will also be able to provide services for our youth that are currently limited in the larger town of Stratford itself. Also, with this kind of expansion and envisioning that Pastor Sutton and members of this church has, I'm sure that this will posture them, position them, to consider other kinds of projects in the future that will be of mutual benefit for the church's mission, but also for the town of Stratford itself. One of the things that many towns and cities like ours is looking at and recognizes the need for on the state level is the need for services for children from birth to age six. There's a great need for services for children in that age category, and who knows, maybe in the very near future, this church will come back with a proposal for the Reverend Dr. Sutton Child Care Facility. Who knows? But it's exciting to hear about this project, and it's touching also to hear the level of questions and insight and dedication that you have that will also help them to produce the kind of project that this town would be proud of. And the reputation of this church is not just in the state of Connecticut, it's throughout the nation, and it will bring other people here from time to time, and that will only benefit our town as a whole. So, thank you for what you do. Thank you, Pastor Sutton. Thank you, Stratford Baptist, for who you are.
Thank you, Mr. Streets. Thank you, Dr. Streets. Mr. Kadim?
Good evening. My name is Wali Kadim. I live 196 Larkin Court, Councilman of the 3rd District. Since I've been in this town 18 years, I visit many churches, but the only church that made me feel like home was First Baptist. When I come in there, I feel warm, I feel love, and the people at First Baptist is a complement to our community in our town. And all that they do is probably not even seen in the diagrams and the breakdown, because they affect lives, they change lives, they love people, they treat people with kindness, and they spread that joy throughout this town, also the world, because it's just not here that they're active. They're connected to different churches all on the East Coast as well. And I am totally, totally happy to see that you guys are getting to feel some of the love from First Baptist. They all here, sharing love with you, hearing and seeing what you do, and appreciating all that you do. So, I pray that God moves you to understand the importance of this. I know you already do. I can feel it, you see it, and thank you for your service. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
And God bless.
Thank you.
Stay careful. Thank you.
Folks, folks, Mr. Paul, Mr. Holt, unless there's something specifically different than what has been said, I will accept, and I think the Commission will accept, that the majority of people who have stood up are in favor of this application, and there won't be a need for you to speak to support it. It will help us move a little faster, unless you have something that you desperately need to say, because it's very different than what we've heard. Mr. Paul?
That's my profile. Joe Paul, 47 Harborview Place. I'll just be brief. One of the things I have to say, and I would be remiss not to say it, the First Baptist Church has always been about community, and in this day and age especially, that they can bring forth an enhancement to this neighborhood and the community in general is a fantastic effort and a great thing for the town of Stratford, and a model for our community and communities across the country. So, I look forward to this going forward as planned. I will say one thing that I want to add, and that's on the backup for this concern you mentioned. There is technology out there for also to offer a battery backup, which doesn't even have any interruption of that kind of pump that goes on. I have one in my house, so I know they can either use battery, which will be a little cleaner and simpler than to worry about someone out there with a generator. So, that's another option they can take as well.
Absolutely acceptable. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Is there anyone who is in oppose to this application? Okay. Before I move this to table, Mr. Knott here still? There is one area that the zoning administrator had made some recommendations also. They were on this last page. They had to do with the front landscape... Sorry, the buffering area we talked about, the dumpster. He recommended that it would be enclosed.
But we will enclose the dumpster.
Okay. The planting strips along Hamilton Avenue?
Well, let me explain about that. If you look at the photos of taken from the back of the church looking out towards Hamilton Avenue and Stratford Avenue, you can see that there's a large green area between the church and the sidewalk. That's the church's side yard. Then you see the sidewalk, then you see there's a three-foot-wide planting strip. The area where Jay is talking about, there is gravel in that planting strip, and people park there to use the milex across the street and to use our church services on Sunday. We can do what Jay suggests, although it's not really a good idea, because if we were to put plantings in that area, it would push the cars that park there out into... Close into the middle of Hamilton Avenue. They pull up into that gravel area now, it's fine, it doesn't cause a problem, we still have a large side yard, and we would rather not do that.
Okay. At least we have a chance to address it. Anything else? That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'd like to get a motion to table.
Motion to close?
Motion to close, thank you. Second by Ms. Baker. Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Anyone oppose? The application is closed. Okay, now we're going to go to the last one for the evening. Thank you, everyone. I know, and I know him, too. Folks, folks, please, please, please try to be quiet. We still have one more application to go, and they've been very patient to wait for us. Thank you. Drive safe. Okay, the last application is for 2505 Main Street by Lazy Dog Management LLC. It's a special case approval per section 13.10, I think it is, for an extension of a liquor permit in an LB district.
How you doing? My name is Niall O'Neill. I'm from Lazy Dog Management LLC. First, I'd like to give you the receipts. I can hand them to you.
Shh, folks, shh. You're getting there. Thank you.
Basically, we're seeking a special case approval, as you said, 15.10, for an extension of a liquor permit in an LB district. It's basically, we're looking to take the abutting space next to the bar restaurant known as Lazy Dog Tavern. The expansion consists of 1,600 square feet, and it's going to be primarily used for private events and overflow from the restaurant.
Thank you very much. So, any questions, commissioners? Mr. Fuller?
Yes, thank you very much. Just two very quick questions. So, I understand that Lazy Dog has a current liquor permit, so part of this is to extend or to renew, whatever the appropriate terminology is?
Yeah, basically, we're just taking the space next door, but because we'll have a service bar in that space that was previously a retail space, it didn't have a liquor permit, so now we're taking... So, our lease is going to be from Lazy Dog. Basically, we're taking next door, and because there was never a liquor permit there, we have to come before zoning commission.
It's a procedural paperwork matter to do that.
Pretty much, yeah.
And so, imagine you said this was going to be for catering, private events, and things of that nature. What are the hours of operation?
They're going to be exactly the same as the Lazy Dog Tavern, which is 11:30 up until...
Currently consistently exist and establish.
Exactly the same. I participated not to be used as much as Lazy Dog Tavern, because if I don't have an event, it won't be open, obviously. It'll only be open when we book an event.
Okay, that answers my question pretty straightforward.
Sounds good. Mr. Giuliano, any questions?
I'm good with it.
Ms. Baker? Mr. Forrester?
I'll start.
I don't have any additional questions either. Thank you. At this point, is there anybody would like to come forward in favor of this application? Anybody would like to come forward in oppose to this application? With that, I'd like to get a motion to close this application? Motion by Mr. Forrester. Second by Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Anybody in oppose? Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Motion to adjourn public hearing?
Motion to adjourn public hearing by Mr. Fuller. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Forrester. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Anyone in oppose? Motion passes. I would like, and I really mean it, a two-minute recess. Strict two minutes, yes. Zooming at what time? 10:03?
This is the public hearing?
We are now in administrative session. We're going to begin with the approval of the minutes from September 27, 2016.
Here it is.
Oh, we can't do those yet. Yeah, that's right.
You should probably just note for the record the alternate who is sitting.
Right, correction, correction.
You should just note for the record you have an alternate sitting.
For the record, we have two alternates that are sitting. Ms. Baker, who is sitting in for Ms. Pepin, and Mr. Forrester, who's sitting in for, well, the now vacancy for the 2nd, 1st and 2nd District, vacated by Mr. Posner. Thank you. And as part of the administration, we'll now look to take... Let's see, we've got King Street.
700 Lordship Boulevard.
Yeah.
Yeah, 700 Lordship.
Well, we've extended King Street at least to the next month. So, we... Unless there's anybody willing, needs to discuss it further, we can just leave it where it is.
Yep.
And the Merrill Anderson Properties. So, that would leave us to 700 Lordship Boulevard and a motion to take it off the...
So moved. A motion to take 700 Lordship Boulevard off the table.
Second.
Second. Mr. Fuller, Mr. Forrester, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Motion passes. Anybody opposed? Thank you very much. All right, this is for 700 Lordship Boulevard, all Ford service repair. Anybody like to make a motion?
So moved. I'll make a motion to approve 700 Lordship Boulevard with the normal stipulations we always place on automotive repairs. I'm sure we have good record of that. We see them almost every month. And then, just, I'd also like to put a stipulation just to reinforce the land...
And then just, I'd also like to put a stipulation just to reinforce the landscaping and aesthetics of the property.
I would agree with that. The landscaping is what I was thinking. Mr. Giuliano?
Yeah, I thought I...
Are you seconding?
I was going to second it.
That's what I was asking, are you seconding it?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Giuliano, and discussion. So, any other discussion? There was two stipulations that were placed on it, one to follow our general regulations on service repair and to follow the regulations, the stipulations for additional landscaping. Any questions? I don't have any other questions, so I'd like to call a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Mr. Giuliano seconded it. Yeah, Mr. Giuliano.
We have a second.
I seconded it.
Yeah, Mr. Giuliano seconded.
Right.
And the next item on our agenda is Point Stratford Renewal, which we, we kept that one open. Is there any further discussion that you wish to have on that?
When your public hearing was continued until the application.
Right.
Yes.
So we'll leave it on the table.
We'll leave it on the table unless anybody's burning to talk about it.
832 is on the table.
And then we have the tax amendment and 225 Lordship Boulevard, which we also continued.
Continued.
And that would leave us now to 1307 Stratford Avenue and 40 Johnson Court, which we did table.
Yeah, motion to take 1307 Stratford Avenue and 40 Johnson Court off the table.
Second by Mr. Forrester, second by Mr. Fuller, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, chair votes yes. Anybody oppose? Motion passes.
Motion to approve with the stipulations regarding the landscaping were possible, battery operated, some form of generator.
Some form of generator.
Operator operated or other type of generator. I think those are the only two, right?
And the dumpster enclosure.
Being enclosed. Thank you.
And it was also a third one, we did ask for them to put some kind of plantings in between the properties.
For 59, on the actual, since they have the driveway, they would be installing it on 59 Johnson.
The adjoining property, yes.
That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Baker. Any further discussion? Call a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Motion to take 2505 Main Street off the table.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Forrester, second by Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Lazy Dog Management.
Motion to approve 2505 Main Street.
By Mr. Forrester, is there a second? By Ms. Baker. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Anybody opposed? Good. All right. We're down to approval. Approval of minutes for September 27, 2016.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Fuller. Second by Ms. Baker, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, chair votes yes. Anyone oppose? Thank you, motion passes. Now we're down to the discussion. We have three items. We'll start with the first one, which is 946 Ferry Boulevard and 876 Husatonic Avenue. That was for the 18-month extension request.
Madam Chair, point of clarification, the agenda reads 876 Husatonic Avenue. It should be noted that's Husatonic Avenue Extension, separate location.
Note it. Secretaries noted it, right? Thank you for the clarification and correction. Okay, do I need a motion? This is not on the table. We can just discuss this.
Madam Chair, could, it's been a while with this one. Could you just bring us back up to speed real quick on what this is?
Sure, we have a 40 residential unit development in Marina. The approval letter, let's see, the most recent extension was granted, let's see, on September 16, 2015, with an expiration of December 19, 2016. Did I say that right? 2015 was the last extension, and there, it expires in December 19 of 2016.
Is that the Danish drive-in property and the property behind it?
I don't know.
That's the restaurant. That's the restaurant that's now...
Was this River Bistro?
It's the Harborview Restaurant.
I thought there was nine, oh, that's right, 955 is across.
Or Riverview Bistro. It's the Riverview Bistro, the property that's in front of it. Remember that one?
I remember this one.
And it's been tied up in litigation. I think it still has some litigation that's going on.
Harborside filed bankruptcy. Yes, indeed, I remember this one very well.
So we, the previous administration, previous zoning commission approved a 40 unit on that site that has just been circling now. This is what, is this the third extension that they're asking for?
I believe this is the, let me see, 2016. I believe this is, this is the second.
This is the second?
Correct.
Okay.
This is the second extension.
I thought it was the third. Are you sure it's not the third?
Let's see, it says it was approved, the approval letter here from, oh no, you're right, it is the third, I'm sorry. The original application came in in 2007.
Mm-hmm, I thought so, I remember that one.
And the litigation.
That's correct.
So this would be the third extension that they're requesting because of the fact that they have not come, that the parties that are involved have not come to an agreement, particularly over the litigation or the bankruptcy of the former owners. It would be up to us if we want to extend them another extension or if we feel that this is not a, what's the word I'm looking for? It would not be in the best interest of the property to continue waiting.
You know, the neighborhood has changed so much since the original application was approved. We now have four new residential properties adjacent to it. Quite frankly, those purchasers probably don't even realize that a development of this nature has even been approved that close to their property. I hate to set a precedence whereby we're going into a third extension and then, you know, because the next time a case comes before us, they'll say, well, you granted it there. So my inclination is to say, you know, we're very sorry that your legal issues have not yet been resolved, but when and if they do, you're welcome to come on back. So I would make a motion to deny the extension.
I've never seen a denial of an extension. I've seen it referred back to public hearing.
No, I'm sure you can deny it. That's the reason why it comes before us. Mr. Fuller, do you want to comment further?
You have a motion, you should entertain a second if there's...
Excuse me?
There's been a motion made.
Sorry, second.
Now you can have discussion.
Sorry. Thank you. Mr. Fuller, you want to comment further?
Yeah, I've never seen a denial of an extension. When it has been put down, it's been compelled to go before the zoning commission again in a public hearing.
Yeah, do you want to comment on that?
I've never, I've never heard of an extension request denied. I've never heard of one ever denied. I've seen them come for 10 years. That, but yeah, you certainly could.
But yeah, but there's nothing...
There's nothing to prevent you.
Rules that say we can't deny it.
I happen to favor where Mr. Forrester is, but I would like the other commissioners to speak on it. Mr. Giuliano?
I mean, you said that, you know, you've never seen it done, does that make it right? I mean, if he would deny it, he can come back, right?
Mm-hmm.
It seems like they're having quite the problem here, I mean, with the comments and everything else. I mean, they've been in litigation for how long? Too long.
This is an application that began in 2007.
Okay.
Ms. Baker?
I see both sides. You know, I see the, you know, it was approved, and it's not the developers' fault, it's tied up in litigation, so...
Okay, my comment is very similar to what Mr. Forrester has. I don't see a light at the end of the tunnel at this point. And the reason that we have the ability for these properties to come back for our review is that if there's extenuating circumstances, and I do believe that this qualifies for extenuating circumstances, this is their third review. They still have the opportunity to come back and put in a new application, but it allows for the public at this time, now that the six years have passed, or more, 10 years, right?
Almost 10.
Almost 10 years, yeah. To look at this property and decide, is this still how that property should be used? And the public that is now living, or the tenants that are near there, the housing, they probably weren't even aware at this point, if they're new, that there was this approval. I'd like to see this go back to a public hearing. If they should decide that they want to pursue this, we might look at it differently, or we might continue with the same, but I, I think at this point, it deserves the opportunity to be heard again. I think we're going to look at it. You guys want to help bring us up to date?
We're just looking for something here on the bankruptcy aspect of the original...
They're looking at the bankruptcy litigation. The question we have is, can we deny it or should we deny it without prejudice? Hey, guys, I understand you're looking at it, but is it a decision whether or not we can deny it?
I've got a bankruptcy question, hold on a second. Hold on one second. The zoning commission has expressed concern with Harborside, Ball Harbor wasn't, Harborside is due to its, chapter 11, it's a light tax. Ball Harbor wasn't bankruptcy. It's course court. Next. I'm trying to decide who the applicant is here. Ball Harbor is making this request, they're trying to obtain title to the property. It's signed a mortgage interest held by someone who tried to forge a mortgage interest.
The question is, can we deny this?
It's up to you. I'm looking at it.
Does it matter?
Bankruptcy issue, we're looking at quickly.
Because if it's a bankruptcy, we don't have the ability to deny it.
I don't, I want to see who has the bankruptcy. I'm trying to decide. Is Harborside Associates, Harborside Associates, Ball Harbor has also requested...
What if we just take, earnestly? This is what I'm going to do, I think I'm going to table it. We're going to table it.
Yeah, I will draw my motion.
There's some questions around, let me give you some background, there's some questions around the ownership of this application and the bankruptcy that's involved and what legal capabilities we have, so I'm going to ask if you could...
Yeah, I withdraw, I want to make a motion.
No, I withdraw the second.
Thank you. So we have a motion to table by Mr. Forrester, second by Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Motion passes, thank you.
It expires until December 19, so you could do nothing and it will expire as well, or you could do something at your next meeting.
Why don't you research it and get back to us?
That will then give you some...
Yeah, Jay, could you provide us the original applicant's paperwork, just in terms of who it was? Because I'm wondering now if it was Salsi Companies as the owner of the property that made the application, and Bell Harbor acquired the rights, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they have...
We're trying to see the standing of this person to even answer this extension.
Right. Exactly, I see that, yeah. I see that, yeah.
There's a third entity involved as well that corresponds with the...
The next one, I'm going to, I have to recuse myself on because the client I have, it's one of a number of clients.
May I be to serve as temporary chair for...
Yes, would you accept being temporary chair for the purpose of 3044 Main Street as I remove myself for a conflict of interest?
We'll take a one-minute recess to get situated.
It'll be 30 seconds.
Yeah.
Boy, you think you can't get out of this chair quick enough.
Keeps crawling on his way back over here.
Okay, so, so we have 3044 Main Street approval final site plan. So Minister Hivansky, do you want to start us off?
Yeah, so we discussed some of the changes that were made to the application in kind of a preliminary review of this project. They reduced the number of units, they reduced the number of parking spaces, however, and since they've submitted to get on this administrative agenda for final plan review and some discussions with the town attorney, John Florrick, we have recommended that the applicant revise how the bedroom breakup, I'm sorry, breakdown is to reflect, to reflect a little bit more consistently with what the zoning commission had originally approved. It's basically a reduction in the number of two-bedroom apartments, back down to, I believe, 12 units as opposed to what is being proposed in these most recent plans.
Yes, so that motion, I think it'd be appropriate to have a representative of the petitioner to address precisely those comments. I want to entertain a motion to allow Mr. Owen to speak on behalf of 3044 Main Street.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Temporary chair votes aye. The floor is yours, Mr. Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and ladies and gentlemen. What we had done since our discussion was either a month or two months ago in administrative session where Mr. Florrick, Attorney Florrick, stood before the commission because there were a number of comments, and there were a number of questions that he clarified as to the original approval, what had happened, et cetera, et cetera, in court, and in thumbnailing it, it's very simple. We were granted approval by this commission for our initial petition, which not only did the town take an appeal on, we took an appeal on based on several conditions that we didn't think were fair or appropriate. The court came back and granted us approval, dismissed the town's appeal, if that's the correct term, dismissed or denies the town's appeal. However, in talking with Mr. Hivansky and quite frankly, with one of the former commissioners here, Mr. Posner, there was concern about the look of the building, concern about some of the parking, and concern about some planting, so what we did is we redesigned the outside of the building, keeping the footprint that was initially part of the approval and the court action. We added some green space as suggested by Mr. Posner and a number of the other commissioners, some green space in the front and some green space in the back, which is pretty difficult to see. And I'll pass this up, but actually, you can see it, you could see it here, there was, we added a whole row of plantings here, we added several parking spaces, and we added some picnic space, picnic tables and chairs to the rear of the development. We think that the design is much better than the initial design. It was a bare-bones design when we came in for the initial approval, and this design is more fitting with the, with the architecture of that neighborhood on Main Street just outside of, between Paradise Green and Long Brook Avenue. With that, I had a conversation with Attorney John Florrick today, and he had a concern, and so did Mr. Hivansky, about the mix of the units. So what we have done is we will reduce the number of two-bedroom units to one-bedroom units, and therefore, what we will end up with is... Give me a second, I can't read all my glasses anymore.
Join the club.
Means I'm getting old. We will end up with 12 two-bedroom units and 27 one-bedroom units for a total of a reduced number of 39 units in the development.
Just to confirm for the record, 39 total units, 12 being two bedrooms and the remainder 27 being single bedrooms.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. And I respectfully request final approval along with the affordability plan that was submitted with these revised plans. I can leave this with you if you'd like, but I would like it back. The plans you have in front of you are a cut-down version of this, and I thank you for your time and for waiving the rules.
Thank you, Mr. Owen, for your testimony. Is there any questions or concerns from the commission or staff? Is there any questions or concerns from the commission or staff at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adopt or approve this final site plan.
I'll make that motion to adopt this final site plan as the applicant read, showed us, whatever.
And do I have a second to...
Second.
Second by Commissioner Forrester. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Temporary chair votes aye. And for the record, David Fuller, sitting as temporary chair for 3044 Main Street Final Site Plan Review, motion passes four zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, noted that Stephanie Phillips have returned as chairperson. Thank you, Mr. Fuller, for stepping in. The third item that we have to discuss is 1056 Stratford Avenue. It's a twelve-month check-in, and change of closing time from ten to eleven. This was, I believe, it says the China House, but it's not the China House. It's, they wanted a smoking...
Yeah, it's Beans and Leaves Smoke Shop.
Yeah, Beans and Smoke, not the China House. But they requested a smoking lounge. That was the original request.
And that was approved in 2015.
Or does it say China House?
No, it's not China House.
Oh, okay.
It's right next to it.
It's next to it.
Okay.
It's part of the strip complex. All right, here it is. So 1056 Stratford Avenue, it's part of a strip mall, right across from 1111 Stratford Avenue. They had received an approval for a smoking lounge granted by the zoning commission in 2015, and they're asking for a twelve-month extension due to unforeseen delays, and the transition of the store was just completed this month. If possible, we would like extension to allow us to remain open to 11:00 p.m. instead of 10:00 p.m. So they're really asking for two things. They're asking for a twelve-month extension, and as a second, they're asking us to allow them to remain open to 11:00 p.m. instead of 10:00 p.m. Mr. Fuller?
Yes, I spoke to the owner, Mahmoud, I forget his last name, who was the owner of that property, and he's also the manager of the property, too. So they're almost done with the, the reason why I sought the extension in the first place, the lounge is up, it's been open, they've been having people being able to smoke tobacco products. So part of the condition of the approval is people have to buy the tobacco on-site. You can't just come in with your own in order to incentivize using the business. They have television there for football, baseball, whatever sort of games people watch. So the extension, I imagine this will be the last extension because they're mostly on their way, they might be doing this just to dot their i's and cross their t's. The second one, I think, is they're looking for, to be open till 11 o'clock, because there's a lot of other, the Gyro Place, the Chinese Place, they're open till 11:00. There's a couple bars in the area that's open well past 11:00. So I think they're just looking to, because a lot of sports games end between 10:00 and 11:00 o'clock at night, so I think they're just looking to be consistent.
With their businesses that are next to them or near them. Okay. Would anybody at least make a motion so that we can...
I'll make a motion to grant this extension.
A motion to grant the extension by Mr. Fuller?
And for the 11:00 p.m.
And as, and to extend the time to 11:00 p.m. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Juliano. Okay, let's have some discussion. Is there any further discussion that anyone might have? Ms. Baker, Mr. Forrester? I don't have anything myself. I'd like to call this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Anyone oppose? No one's opposed. Motion passes. It's granted. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the CAM site review, 975 Lordship Boulevard. And we started to discuss this at the last meeting, and it got kind of late. I would, if you would indulge me, I'd like to ask Mr. Casey to come to the podium to help walk us through it a little again. And we'll need a motion to accept Mr. Casey to speak. So may I... Move by Mr. Forrester, second by Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Good evening. Jim Casey with Stratford Development, live at 1903 Burr Street in Fairfield, Connecticut, and thank you for waiving the rules. Madam Chairman and members of the commission, I can walk you through this. It's a long history, but I'll start with the first approval. Earlier tonight, you heard somebody trying to redevelop the Stratford Army Engine Plant, and they referenced that they were adopting zoning regulations. They're talking about the ones that we worked with the Planning and Zoning Commission back in 1995 through 1998, about a three-year process, very similar to what he explained, where we created this long-term understanding between the town, the different boards and commissions, as well as giving the developer a chance to go out there, market things with a certain understanding of what's allowable. So I think they're figuring it out, and they've seen what's happened here. What happened here was, we had a 700-acre site that was in thirty years of permitting, and it had a lot of sensitive wetlands and a lot of areas that needed to preserve and protect. After thirty years of going through the regulations with the DEP and the Corps, the town of Stratford never had any jurisdiction on the site. Once we settled with the DEP and the Corps, we came to the town of Stratford, we adopted new zoning regulations, and we effectively named two sites, the East Campus and the West Campus, from the zoning regulations, where we classified them as a planned economic development. In 1998, this commission and all the associated commissions in the town approved the regulations and that adoption. And that was a 30-acre site of contiguous land. Once you have that PED designation, you come back with a, his terminology today was master plan, our terminology was general development plan. You show everybody a series of buildings, you allow more than one building on a lot, so you could have a 40-acre lot with ten buildings on it, or two buildings on it, or one building on it. And you never need to subdivide it, but if you do, it doesn't really change anything. So once we had the PED designation, and we got the general development plan approved in 1998, we went to work and developed the West Campus. The West Campus General Development Plan was approved in 1998. The first building was constructed in 2001 via an administrative approval. We had no sooner created a general development plan for the West Campus and showed a series of buildings. When we came back with the first building, and everybody said, it's similar to what you showed, it's a little different location, but it's got the same uses, it's not asking for any waivers. So we built the first building with administrative approval. We built the second building, the third building, and the fourth building. And it was over a 10-year process. That represented 428,000 feet. And after we completed that development, we came to the East Campus. The East Campus is 42 acres, it's got a general development plan approved in 1998. We came back to all the town boards and commissions, 2013, and we got approval to build 530,000 square feet. It went through everything, every town board and commission. It was a maximum build plan, maximum paving, maximum building coverage, and maximum drainage requirement on the site. That deal fell apart. We came back in 2014, when Mr. Fuller was head of this commission, we received administrative approval to build the 225,000-foot building on a portion of the site. That building was constructed, but all the stormwater management and all the effects of the perimeter impacts the site were installed at the same time that the 225,000-foot building was constructed. We submitted a application to you all that we're here for tonight, and I do appreciate everybody's patience and time and staying so late, and we're asking for the approval to build 137,700 square-foot building, where four sides of the site are already encumbered and developed, have all the stormwater management systems needed, have all the underground utilities, and it's another use that is clearly, you know, proved and allowable in Stratford. I'll stop and take a breath and let you guys ask any questions.
Thank you for that very thorough summary. I think that's very helpful in kind of getting the context to that. That was my big concern, was where were we in the process? Because when you go back to 1998 to present day, there's, could imagine, there's probably sixty different people who sat in these chairs on various planning and zoning boards. So I appreciate that, and I also want to apologize to you for really going hard at you at the previous meeting, too. I think it would be helpful, moving forward, if you have to come back for us, wherever CAMs or whatever administrative views, not just us as in these particular zoning commissioners, but any planning and zoning commission board, is to give that history, to elaborate that history, to show kind of all the different review processes that got you to that point. I think that answers a lot of the questions that, because you have to look at, if a commission never sat on that before, when they see a three-inch binder, it's a lot to take in in an administrative review.
Understood. Thank you.
Mr. Juliano?
No, I'm good with it all now. That was an excellent...
Summary?
Summary, and now I know where we stand. Like Dave was saying, we got hit with it, and maybe we just need a little more communication between wherever, and, but that's fine. I mean, I've been down there, and you can't miss it. I mean, I grew up my life all here. Of course, I know about all of that, you know. I'm staying there, I'm not going nowhere. So, no, I, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Baker?
No, I'm good.
No questions? Mr. Forrester?
I'm good.
Mine's easy. Just in terms of visual, what property, we know where the FedEx building, reference to that, where do you think this building is going? So we have a visual.
Where it's going?
Mm-hmm.
It's shown on the site plan. It's going to be, let's put it this way, if you're driving in the new driveway, on the left-hand side is a 12-acre site.
Right.
That's it. On the right-hand side is a 2.3-acre site. We don't know what we're doing there.
But it's going to be closer to the road, though.
It's going to be just, just on the other side of the pond, and not, you know, before you get...
That's what I saw. I just wanted to make sure I didn't, I read it correctly.
That's correct.
I don't have...
As a matter of fact, Mr. McCann, on the Wetland Commission, was one of the first people I ever met in this town, and he kind of giggled when I came before him again and said, you know, "Don't you ever go away." But, I mean, he knew the history, which was very good, and I understand. You don't have that on all the boards.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have Mr. McCann.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, I don't have any further questions. Does anybody else have any further questions?
Yeah, is there anything going there? You're going to put this up? Is it already been, is there a name on it or anything?
Well, you know, what we do is, we go out, like the gentleman was talking about, in market, what we believe is allowable. We have a company, they're a nice company, they're a big company, but we don't have anything signed. So we don't get the opportunity to wait around before they say yes, because everybody wants to move in in four or five months, and I can't build a building that fast. So the reason we went through the 530,000-foot approval was, we hedged our bet and started this process and got it approved, at which time they, about a month or two later, said we're not interested. So we hope to have a deal signed before year-end, we hope to break ground before year-end, and I'll certainly keep everyone posted, and you'll see when we come down and pull a building permit.
That's my final two questions, and I'll be pretty much satisfied with this. Do you anticipate any other, either administrative reviews or CAM plans coming before the commission in the next couple of years? It's kind of speculative, I know, but...
If this project moves forward, I would say we'll see you one more time, because we only have a 2.3-acre lot undeveloped.
Okay, so it's only a 2.3 that's really left to be developed.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
That was, that answered all my questions.
Mr. Casey, thank you for that summary. You've been most patient and generous with, you know, taking us through that.
Thank you, for your support, and I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I'd like to call for a vote.
I'll entertain a motion.
All in favor?
Need a motion?
No, you need a motion, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the CAM coastal area management...
By Mr. Fuller? Second by Mr. Juliano. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes. Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is the zoning enforcement study. Any...
No.
Complaint?
No.
Nothing new? Any accessory apartment applications?
No.
Sediment and erosion control?
No.
Nope, very good. Planning projects, Linda's not here, so we, I don't know if you have anything on the Greenway. Goal setting, there's some things on this goal setting that I have not heard back from the town attorney's office. Mr. Florrick was looking into a few of these items to see what resources that we might acquire from some help from other departments, like the town attorney's office. For example, the medical marijuana, Mr. Fuller's done quite a bit of work on it, but we were also looking for some assistance from the town attorney's office to see if we could engage them to help us get some information from other towns, survey some information, and so forth. Mr. Hivansky?
I can do that. We could put out a request through the Connecticut Conference Municipalities and get all that data.
Now, I'm sure there's a little bit of an update, too. Thanks to the Planning Commission finally meeting and deliberating on the subject, there's actually two appointed planning commissioners to sit on the board, too. So I'm going to reach out to them, find out what day of the week works best for them to effectively meet. But also, we lost one of our members on that committee, so I'd recommend we at least parity two zoning to two planning.
Would anybody else like to join?
I'll join, I'm...
I was putting a good word for you, Mark.
Yeah, I saw that hook on the side.
No, I'll just, get me any information, and I'll show me where to go.
So we formally appoint, unless there's any other, I don't think we need a vote on this, unless there's any objection, Mr. Juliano will replace Mr. Posner's spot on that particular task force.
Nothing about method on what, that's...
Nothing on.
Right now.
Are we in agreement that the assistance that we might need to reach out to the other communities for some information about what other communities are doing could be handled through Mr. Hivansky and the town attorney's office? Thank you very much. Signs, I will come back to, because I haven't, I was going to do that, but I have not. The Army Engine Plant, we just heard a little bit of it. Do you want to add any more to that?
No, nothing new.
Nothing new. Okay, parking, we, I don't think we've done anything on this, and I'm not pushing at this point.
Just, Jay and I had some conversations on where to begin to look and reach...
Recommendations to the town council, I've sent the letters that I had, so I didn't have anything new. And number six, discuss areas where activated space is required. We actually did accomplish that.
Yeah, you...
Today.
Hit that gate.
Okay. The only discussion, and it's, we can do it today, or leave it to the next administrator, if you think that there's some areas that this commission feels is worthy of pursuing to tweak or adjust. Does anything jump out at anybody that they...
I don't know if it's zoning regulation, or if it's zoning enforcement, but I'm beginning to see too many political lawn signs on public right-of-ways.
I agree with that. I, that is, but on the TOD, is there anything further that anybody wants to do with, is my question, at this point in time? The recommendation for Mr. Hivansky was to just move forward, take every special case and look at it carefully, and then develop some learning from that. Is that satisfactory?
Yeah, I'm good with that. I mean, we talked about it, and, you know, I mean, you just got to watch, you know, we'll be going for three to four stories, more parking, less parking, I mean, you know, we did have a discussion.
I'm going to strike number six off of our agenda as completed. Hey, hey.
May I make a quick inquiry?
Yes.
The research you wanted, is that on 3B only? Am I correct?
3A and B.
Both A and B.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Fuller, coming back to your point about political lawn signs, I would agree. I think we should address that.
Especially since we have a polite officer.
Yeah, we have a polite officer.
The problem is, is that the polite officer of zoning enforcement can't enforce anything on public property. We only have, we only have the ability to enforce on private property.
Private property.
So I know we received a bunch of complaints about a bunch of signs on state-owned right-of-way, on states, attached to state signs. I actually sent a complaint to the Department of Transportation for the state of Connecticut, and unbelievably heard back with, from them within 45 minutes.
You heard back? I sent something, I didn't get anything back.
And within two hours of the complaint, they had someone out there on their roadway division who removed twenty-five signs.
Oh, good.
Not just that one, roughly twenty-five signs that were in the public right-of-way.
Excellent.
I don't want to really go after private property with political lawn signs, because that is a free speech, you own the property, a lawn sign is speech... that is a free speech, you own the property, a law sign is speech, so I don't want to push that one. It's really just about the public spaces.
Well, I think that, I'm agreeing with you, Mr. Fuller, that I think it's an opportunity for us to look at that and put some provisions around it, because that is obviously what's happening, and maybe we can put some provisions around it to allow some use, but limit it in certain areas so that there's some control over that. With that said, could you help us with some kind of language or what other towns are doing?
I know other towns, for instance, I know some that just send public works out to take the signs off of town property. Send out a pickup truck and a man or two and throw them all in the back. Every illegal sign, they just pick them off up the sidewalks, you know, whether they're A-frame signs, those little plastic A-frames, flags, anything, they just pick them all up periodically and bring them to the transfer station.
Yeah, we do, but the only problem is, it just takes a lot of resources from public work that we need to devote elsewhere.
The problem you're going to have is, you can make it illegal, you can ask the town council to create an ordinance, but the fact is, if I take a, you know, a Jay Hibansky-for-President sign and put it up on the town green, who are you going to, unless you see me doing it, are you going to give him the ticket, or are you going to give him the ticker?
I could answer a little bit to that.
That's the problem.
With political communications, there's usually some sort of committee that is responsible for paying and producing that sign, but you could always make them, the friends of Jay Hibansky-for-president, for example, and that treasurer is going to, not going to be a happy person, I'll put it that way.
Well, you can have a situation where someone takes the Jay Hibansky sign off of my front lawn and puts it on the public right-of-way, and, and, you know, so he had nothing to do with it. He didn't commit the crime.
And, and.
But the trouble, you have an enforcement.
To Commissioner Fuller's comment, I have submitted the regulations for signs, especially political signs, to the registrar of voters to distribute to the two different parties to make sure that everyone is aware of what is allowed and what isn't allowed.
Yeah, you have. And I think what we're talking about, though, is that maybe giving some allowances within a certain timeframe in certain areas where we do allow political signs on a public right-of-way, but they have to be responsible for removing them with a fine attached and some other parameters.
Well, if you want to see what that looks like, I would direct you to Westport. Westport allows political signs on town properties, and one should just drive down the Post Road or any of the streets in Westport and see what their traffic islands look like. They, there are quite a few signs on top of each other on those islands where it's tough sometimes, frankly, to read one sign from the other, you have so many. But they do allow political signs on public traffic islands.
And that's a town ordinance.
It's a town ordinance. That's, that's what you're suggesting.
Yeah, that sounds like free-for-all.
You go to Westport and take a look what they look like, and you may.
But could we take something that's not quite as loose as free, as Westport and, you know, tailor it down so that we don't have a free-for-all?
You might have a free-for-all if you say six signs per, I don't know, you can do it by square foot, by, it could become, the enforcement, you're going to have an enforcement issue. How are you ever going to regulate that? It's going to be.
In regulating what type of signs, it gets, starts to get into dangerous territory of regulating free speech, and only, only political signs are allowed in the public right-of-way. How are we going to, why can't Stephanie's Psychic advertise there? And, you know, there's been a lot of literature going on and litigation regarding signage and regulating what different type of signs can say what, where they can go.
You're getting to content regulation.
Yeah.
Is it a, is it a political sign? Is it the YMCA pumpkin festival? Is it blues on the beach? Is it the Psychic, Stephanie's Psychic? You know, it's.
Now, that raises another issue. I have a profound problem with the town breaking its own rules by putting up town signs on properties it shouldn't be on.
Yeah, and that's exactly what happens. All right, we're going to spend more time on this. I'd rather do this in a smaller setting rather than spending all this time. There is one item, though, that I would like to put and ask you if you're interested. Extensions. Generally, as, in tonight being somewhat of an exception, generally, extensions come forward, and they're generally approved. And I often feel that the administration, the administrator and his staff can, has the background, the knowledge to know whether or not that they are legitimate, and if they are excessive or exceed whatever parameters we want to put forward, they should be given the opportunity or the requirement to decide whether or not they're extended or not. And if there is something that is extenuating outside of those parameters, then it comes to us. I think it takes a lot of our time to try to catch up, hear the history, just for an extension, which most of the time, nearly, they're always granted. So a proposal that I wanted to put forward, which we would have to discuss, we would need, you know, the town attorney's help, is to look at legislation that allows the Planning and Zoning Office to administer extensions with maybe some parameters that they, if it comes up to the third extension or the fourth extension, that it needs to come before the zoning commission for those extenuating circumstances. How do you feel about something like that?
You'd have to take a look at underlying state statutes, because there is a lot of statute that goes with extension. The other question, too, is should, whoever the planning and zoning administrator might be, should a petitioner feel aggrieved? What sort of appeal process do they have? Could they then come before the zoning commission to dispute whether an extension was given or not? So that's something we might want to take a look at as well.
Okay. I think those are noted. Mr. Juliano, do you have any thoughts?
No.
Baker?
I'm just, I mean, we put some extensions out there, and they are for a lot that are under the TOD and stuff, and I really would like to see a TOD done, because I'd like to use that as an example, and so far, we really haven't got anything going.
Yeah, we haven't had a.
I mean, that's, that's where I stand on that, because look at the last three we had or whatever, two of them were TODs. I mean, I, and then, you know, just by reading that TOD, I mean.
I beg your point. Which ones were TOD?
We haven't had an extension.
We got the.
Oh, we didn't have any extensions.
We didn't have any extensions on those.
Oh, the extension was what?
That, it wasn't a TOD, though.
It wasn't a TOD?
No. It wasn't a TOD.
3044 Main Street was actually an E30G affordable housing.
Right. Mr. Forrester? So let me put it this way. I'm going to ask the town attorney if you could look at some, with the assistance of Mr. Hibansky's office, to put together a amendment, is it, or a regulation, that would allow the planning and zoning staff to make approve, approve or decisions on extensions up to, in their discretion, whether it's 12 or 18 months, up until, what, the third extension?
It's approximately.
Six years?
Yeah.
Six years, three extensions?
I think it's probably better to put a year as opposed to third extensions, this way you have, because there's a big difference between a 12 and an 18-month extension, so I think go with the six years.
I think six years is good.
And that leaves some flexibility for an applicant as they're approaching that time, that extra, I mean, six years is a little additional, little additional time in terms of months.
In months.
Yeah.